The Lorain County Commissioners would like to welcome you to come down to the Lorain County Dog Kennel.
We have lots of dogs available for adoption. We also encourage all dog owners to register your dog each year and get a dog license.
We also have a special dog license. It's a special heart, medical care license tag for an additional $5. And the proceeds from that go to help us when we pick up a stray that's injured or needs extreme medical care.
Remember, your best friend is waiting for you.
Welcome to another broadcast of the Lorain County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorain County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Ilaria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
Okay, would you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, and welcome to the December 8th meeting of our Lorain County Board of Commissioners. Oh, boy, Ms. Lori's doing the dog today. He's taking you for a walk.
We have today for your, somebody to take for maybe a Christmas present for your children, a nice little yellow lab mix. How old is she? Two? About two years old? My goodness. I think she needs a nice, big yard to run around in. She's probably been in the cage for too long. She's a little hyper today. But make a great Christmas present. She's available now, and she's in cage one, so stop down at our dog kennel and see what kind of dog you might want to take home for Christmas. Thanks.
Nice job, Lori. She even had her sitting. A thought for today, and this is very appropriate considering what we're going to discuss, I think. This is attributed to Leadership Lorain County Calendar, and the author is Dr. David Hens. It says, "You have to respect opinions and ideas, even if they are not your own."
Nice.
I encourage you, that's not very nice. I would like to move to item number 11 on the agenda, which is a decision on the 226.13 acres annexation from Carlisle to the City of Ilaria, Agent James Taylor. Mr. Ennis, I believe you've been speaking to the attorneys representing the various parties.
Yes, Commissioner, and it's my understanding that the parties wish to propose a continuance of consideration of this matter. So I guess I'll ask Mr. Taylor if he wants to come forward.
Good morning, Mr. Taylor.
Good morning, Commissioners. We've had a chance over the last couple of days to talk, being the attorneys and the parties. Mr. Schrader, who represents the township, myself, Mr. Lundey's here for the city today. What we would ask, and we've discussed this with Jerry, what we would ask, that it be a 60-day, not stay, but additional time given to you to make a decision in regards to this, with the understanding that if the negotiations which are ongoing right now between the city and the township ask to, I won't call it necessarily a JED, but an agreement that they're working on regarding the sewer system and the taxation and all the different issues which may include a JED. If that falls apart in the next 60 days, we could, by notifying Jerry and each other, the respective councils and parties, that we could bring this to a head sooner. If there is nothing going on that can be worked out, then there's no sense to wait the 60 days. But if in the 60-day period, they've made progress and hopefully concluded, not necessarily a finalization with reading with their respective councils and boards, but if they've reached an agreement, then we would come back and say, "We've got something worked out." Let them pass it through their respective councils and boards, and if they don't, to go ahead and make a decision at that point in time. I believe that, Mr. Schrader, is that your understanding? And if you want to add anything, feel free. And Mr. Lundey's here from the city. We've chatted now. Have you, he's concurred, is that correct, Mr. Lundey? Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Good morning, Mr. Schrader.
That is correct. We would ask that you give a 60-day moratorium on making a decision. And the reason is that while we're negotiating, it doesn't seem to make a lot of sense to have one side have a negotiating advantage over the other. Somebody's going to win this, somebody's going to lose it once a decision is made. That maybe makes one side a little less likely to negotiate perhaps. So there's a practical reason for asking that you do this. The legal basis for it is, there's always been a requirement that Commissioners make a decision within a certain time after an annexation hearing. The time changed under the new law, but there's always been that requirement. And under the old law, and all the attorneys that looked at it, including, I think, Jerry Ennis, we believe the law is pretty much the same as the, under the old law, that if, in fact, you don't make a decision, the only remedy is, any one of the three official parties, the township, the city, or the petitioners, could file a mandamus action and ask the court to come and please to order you to make a decision. So you don't lose jurisdiction, you don't grant it or deny it. Nothing happens if you don't make a decision. So we think as a practical matter, it makes sense to do a 60-day moratorium. We thought it also made sense that if, within that 60 days, negotiations were to fall apart, then any one of those three parties, the city, the township, or the petitioners, on notice to the other two parties and on notice to the Commissioners, could ask the Commissioners to go ahead and make a decision. So we think it keeps the pressure on everybody to hurry up and try to work out some resolution. And for that reason, we do, and I think all three, the city, the township, and the petitioners, are asking that you just do a 60-day moratorium on deciding this annexation. Nothing else would change. And hopefully, we can come back in 60 days and report progress. And if we don't, then nothing worse happens, then you have to make a decision later on. So I think that fairly states what we're doing and why. And we would ask that you allow us that 60-day moratorium on a decision, so we can try to negotiate. I do want to say that whatever we negotiate's going to be a whole lot different than what was negotiated this last summer. And we've already, I think, made some progress on some issues that were important to the public out there in Carlisle Township. So I'm cautiously optimistic, but you know, you always know when everybody signs the documents. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Schrader. Mr. Lundey, on behalf of the city.
I guess I'm up here with some words of caution. I spoke with Chris Heikenlaw, our Economic Development Director, who was unable to attend this morning's meeting. And he indicated to me that we're not terribly optimistic that a JED could be arranged in 60 days. So we would at least like to make you aware of that. I don't want you to be acting under some false pretenses that we're close. So just so you're aware, that we're not very optimistic that one could be reached within 60 days.
But in 60 days, you might be closer than you are today.
I would hope so.
Mr. Cortez, he's been itching to talk.
Well, no, not necessarily. Just wanted to let you know that we have another meeting set. I think it's next Wednesday to...
Fourteenth or...
Right, to continue our pursuit of resolution to getting a JED. I think the discussions are progressing nicely. I mean, sooner or later, we've got to put a little rubber where it meets the road. But I think we've had very open and positive discussions, and we're actually exploring concepts, I think, that are unique and new, that have not been discussed before. And I think that if we just accelerate that process, maybe we can get a little bit more outcome in the 60 days. You know, you have our commitment to facilitate anywhere we can. So we need to meet more often. We'll meet more often. Whatever we can do to help the process, the Commissioners have committed time and resources through me to facilitate this. And I will be there to deliver whatever we need to deliver to try to bring the parties closer and closer together. And I see the Township trustees are here, and they've been actively involved also in the process with Mr. Schrader. And I think the discussions have been productive. Hopefully, the trustees are nodding, maybe yes.
Do we have to schedule a date 60 days from today, Jerry?
Yes, and I have checked with Teresa. We have counted up, and approximately 60 days from today is our February 2nd meeting. Is that agreeable to the attorneys? Okay. Then I'll move that we continue this annexation hearing to February the 2nd at 9:30 a.m.
Commissioner, we're not really continuing the hearing.
We're not? Did we close the hearing?
We're just, yes, we closed the hearing.
We did? Sorry. I'm trying, Teresa.
We're just continuing making a decision.
So I'm in my motion to say that we, what do I want to say then, please?
I'm just indicating that this will be set for making a decision on February 2nd, subject to the proviso that if any one of the three entities come in and ask us to go ahead and make a decision, we will move that date forward.
I move what Jerry said.
I'll second.
Ms. Blair?
I like my own motion better, but...
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Commissioner, if I may, just, I mentioned this to the parties. I want to make sure everybody's clear. The Commissioners' last meeting for this year is December 15th. So I mean, if you, somebody comes in on Christmas Eve, we're not going to be able to get a meeting together again like in mid-January. Okay. And I also told the parties that as part of this deal, the Commissioners expect one of them to adopt the dog.
Yes, who's taking the dog? It's a long ride home, Al, with that dog.
It's a wonderful dog, but I have two already.
Three's company.
I was hoping the gentleman from the city might want to...
The board is appreciative of your efforts this morning, and we want to thank you again for working on this, what I consider a very worthwhile project, because the outcome will make everybody a winner, I think. Thank you to the trustees, all three being here. Trustee Bob White, trustee Jim Wright, and newly-elected trustee Barry White. Taylor, why, I apologize, Barry. Oh, are you going to sing this morning? My apologies, Barry, I'm sorry. And I'm looking at Linda Jacobs and everybody else from Carlisle Township. So, thank you. And to the developers and the petitioners for allowing this to go forward. We appreciate your patience. Okay? Happy holidays to all of you.
Merry Christmas to you as well.
Thank you. Are you going to say? I'm Adam Clerk.
Would you like me to start?
It's now your turn.
There will be three public hearings today, starting at 10:00, 10:05, and 10:10, respectively. On Carrington Point, Carlisle Township, Willow Creek, number two, and Willow Creek, number three, both in the township, on placing ditches on perpetual county maintenance. Under resolutions, number one, Job and Family Services bills.
So moved, I have my moment.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Appropriations?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Advances and repeaters?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Requisitions?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Travel expenses?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Bills?
Uh-uh, so moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners, authorize various personnel actions as indicated in the summary for employees within jurisdictions in Lorain County Commissioners.
Commissioners, I'd like to request an executive session at the conclusion of our regular board meeting today. I have a number of personnel issues and potential hirings I would like to discuss with the board. I think we also have a matter of litigation that we need to decide on some dates for depositions. So I would ask that we spend a little time afterwards in exec, doing those two issues. Both of them are permitted under the sunshine law. Thank you.
Authorize the salary of Lori Mariana?
Very good.
Ooh.
Very good.
Lorain Municipal Court Clerk at bi-weekly rate of $1,405.12 effective November 14. That should be 2005, I was... Who replaced retired clerk Stephen Bansick reflected in the county's two-fifth share.
So moved.
Second, with a question. Do we participate in part of her salary? Is that why?
Yes, Commissioner, we actually participate in a number of elected officials within the municipality's salaries. We also pay judges, magistrates. It's a, and we have very little control over what we're billed for those. I think our share is two fifths, if I'm not mistaken. We've, we've at times kind of debated back and forth on various practices within the municipalities. But the treasurer, judges, things like that, their salaries are pretty much, are up to the municipalities, and we have to pay just that two-fifths percent.
All the municipalities, not just...
Yes.
Okay.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Establish after-hours and weekend redemption program for Lorain County Dog Kennel. Citizen will contact Sheriff's Department, who will then dispatch a dog warrant to redeem the dog. A fee of $50 will be charged for the dispatched dog warrant, plus the cost of redemption, licensing, penalty, et cetera.
I assume you wanted to speak, Mr. Cortez?
Well, you know, I want to thank the dog and kennel folks, and especially Jack, for getting this taken care of. The, one of the, one of the problems we've had out there is sometimes we're closed for two or three days with holiday schedules and so forth. And I don't know how other people feel, but if my dog got away and was picked up by the dog warden, I want my dog back immediately. And that's been a bit of a problem with us. And Jack and I did a brainstorm and came up with how much we thought it would cost for a special dispatch to the deputy to come out and get your dog. And if somebody truly wants their dog back, they now have a way with this policy to be able to call and have a dispatch made and open up the pound. I'm hoping that when those dogs are brought in, that they're posted immediately on the internet, so you'll have a good idea whether your pet is at the pound or not, rather than waiting, you know, two, three, four days to find out if your pet's even there, when you could have picked them up a few days earlier. So it'll provide a better public to the service. It'll also get those animals returned to their homes a lot faster if people choose to do it that way. I will say the cost was developed out of actual costs. There's no profit-making here. In fact, we probably losing a few dollars on this, but that's reasonable cost to the salaries and the call-out. We have a requirement under the union, how much we have to pay on a call-out and so forth. So I don't want you to think we're trying to gouge the community. We're probably still losing money even at the $50, but I think it's a worthwhile venture.
Also moved.
Second.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Renew an administrative service agreement with Medical Mutual Cleveland, Ohio, effective January 1st, 2006, to December 31st, 2006.
Jim, this is the third year of their contract?
That's correct, Commissioners. It's the third year of their contract. Next year, we're going to be working very, very diligently on our medical costs. Not that we're not working on it here, but we're in the third year on a renewal that was agreed to a few years ago. Some things have changed, and I don't mind stating publicly that this board has given me some marching orders concerning our health care next year that we need to take a look at, and some things that you want done. And I have it on my docket, and that was something we talked about a few months ago, about developing alternatives and solutions to some problems that have been occurring specifically, and the one problem is cost. Just for, I'll go on record here saying, just to the general fund alone this year, the increase in health care cost is $463,000, just to the general fund. And the general fund makes up less than a third of our enrollees in the health care. So, you know, anybody can do the math. So we need to wrestle with some big issues next year. We're, we're working right now, and I expected to have now, but probably next week, new contracts that got better discounts for our prescription drug coming to the board. We've been able to achieve an additional percent on the average wholesale price of our brand drugs, and we're looking at the Mac generic prices, and we're trying to get that above 50% to bring down some of those costs. The biggest growth we have is in the prescription drugs still. It's still, it's slowed a bit over the last couple of years, but it's still a tremendous amount of cost every year, increasing cost. So we need to wrestle with that. We do real well on the medical, it's utilization. And we have to look at some of those benefits that can be moved around a bit and put into a different environment while still providing effective services for our employees. I know what your mandate is, and I'll be working on it this spring with our consultants and agents, and hopefully, we'll bring back some alternatives that'll slow this down a bit.
Also moved for approval.
Second.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Under Community Development Department, approve reimbursement to City of Sheffield Lake for planning expenses in the amount of $10,000 for the Shore Race Shopping Center, and this will be paid from account CDBGFY04.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Under Job and Family Services, authorize various personnel within Lorain County Department of Job and Family Services to utilize various credit card privileges for the year 2006.
Near 200. Okay, also moved.
Second.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Renew a contract between Department of Job and Family Services and Emerge Inc., Ilaria, in the amount of $4,720 for the design, production, and distribution of a quarterly electronic newsletter for the agency. This is effective January 1st, 2006, through December 31st, 2006, and to be paid from the Internet Services account.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Under Board of Elections, award a contract to SM Fox Construction, Inc., Ilaria, in the amount of $65,674 for alterations for election systems and security to Lorain County Board of Elections building. This includes additions of alternate G1, G2, and G3 via alterations for the election system and security to be paid from account Q Construction Board of Elections. Bids were open on November 23rd, there being four, and this was the lowest and most responsive complying with specifications. Issue notice to proceed effective honor before December 19th, and to complete honor before March 10, 2006. Also authorize County Minister to notify the county auditor to release, retain, and check completion of said project.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Under the engineer, instruct clerk to advertise public hearing to be held January 19, 2006, at 10:00 a.m. Commissioners' public hearing room to consider placing a portion of lateral three, branch one, of the Alexander Ditch for Fiddler's Green subdivision, Village of Grafton, on permanent maintenance. The estimated cost of ditch is $30,000, with maintenance charge of $22 per sublot, for a total of $1,562 per year. Notice will be published in the Chronicle Telegram on January 5th, and notices to be sent to the owners on December 29th.
We are meeting that day? No?
The second one, yes.
Oh.
Coast Gina Renee from the Janu. Yes.
Okay, also moved.
Second.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Under the prosecutor treasurer, accept and journalize a tree tack, which is the delinquent real estate tax collection appropriation and expenditure report estimated by Lorain County Treasurer and Lorain County Prosecutor, pursuant to the Ohio Revise Code, the 321.261 for the year 2005. The revenue generated for 2005 was $536,427.91, and the 2006 estimate of anticipated revenue will be approximately $475,000.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Cortez, County Minister.
One brief comment, that we only have one meeting planned for the rest of the year, so for our own departments and people out there, because some of our people do watch this, they need to get anything they want done for us for the 15th next week. Will be sending memos out reminding people. So I would let the Commissioners know that usually the last meeting of the year gets a little bit chaotic around here when people are trying to bring the clerk last-minute stuff, so we need to be very flexible next week. We've had a little bit more coordination this year, but there's always a few things that started coming out in the last week. The other thing is, if you noticed, the bids on the Board of Election came in well under our estimate of $90,000. The original work out there, they had scope was about 120. We had discussed it and allocated 90, and the bids came in at 65,000. So there's some aggressive bidding going on out there for our projects right now. So it's always nice to have a bid come on to what we expect, because, you know, we've been seeing a lot of the over ones right now. So maybe we can do a little bit more out the Board of Elections as we get this work done, for them to assist them with meeting all the requirements that have a law. That's all my comments this morning. Thank you.
Mr. Ennis, Assistant County Prosecutor?
Just, there are a few, a few matters of pending litigation we need to discuss.
Commissioners report?
Commissioner Lori?
No report this morning.
Okay.
Yeah, busy week, just getting things cleaned up in the end of the year. I know we've got budgeted things coming up, but also had an opportunity to see Mayor Michael Coleman from Columbus speak at the City Club in Cleveland. And quite impressed, as we entered our agreements with our Lorain County Growth Partnership a week and a half ago, Columbus is doing something quite similar. They just started initiative with eight different political subdivisions and economic development entities to establish 69,000 jobs. So it's nice to see them doing a regional process always, and I was quite impressed with what he had to present. He did a very nice job, don't you think, Jim?
It was great, great discussion, great, great points he was making about what needs to happen in the state.
Right, no, he's very, right on top of it. And it's nice that we're doing the same things that Columbus is doing, which is our fastest-growing community, and the ratings of quality of life there were unbelievable, and hoping to get ours there.
What did he say yesterday? Government works when people work.
Yep.
That just stuck on me.
And that completes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner. Rebecca Gray from the Lorain County Community Alliance. Rebecca, you have something for us today?
I just wanted to thank everyone who attended last week's Alliance meeting where we discussed the development of rail, passenger and freight rail systems in Ohio. It was very interesting, because not only are they talking about it in terms of moving passengers and people, they're talking about it being an economic development tool, which fits in nicely with what you were talking about, Commissioner Kayla, about, about economic development systems along the Tri-C Corridor, not just in Ohio, but they're talking about a seven-state consortium of connecting Ohio to these greater rail systems that we have. So it's going to be a great tool that Ohio has. And he committed Lorain County on positioning itself to be ready to take advantage of this when this money comes, becomes available. So it was very affirming that we're heading in the right, the right direction. So thank you to everyone, and thank you to the City of Ilaria for hosting.
Thank you, Rebecca. If anybody out there in Never Neverland has a coat that doesn't really belong to them, if they will call my office at my fundraiser, somebody went home with the wrong coat. We'd like to put the right coat with the right owner. So if you know of anybody who looks at their coat and decides it isn't really theirs, give us a call. Judy Nedwick, you wanted to make a report on item number nine?
Good morning, Commissioners. Judy Nedwick, Lorain County Recorder. Just a note of clarification for Township Trustees. A letter went out to them. We do this every year as a matter of courtesy. Their resolutions and amendments are due in by January 15th of '06, and it is a cost of a flat fee of $100 at that time. Anytime they want to amend that, it is $20 for the first page and $4 for everyone thereafter. Just to note that it is not, we're not going to charge them the $20, you know, until after January 15th. This is very important that the trustees get their resolutions and amendments into us, and this is cited by the code. So I think if we put a period after the $100, and I will furnish the clerk with a copy of the code.
Thank you very much, Judy. Thank you. Okay. Now it's your turn, Madam Clerk.
I don't have anything.
You don't?
No, we're just going to be busy next week.
You're going to be busy, okay?
When she's busy, we're busy.
Oh, we'll make decisions, you just tell us what we have to do. Okay, I move the...
We'll have public hearings next week.
Oh, yeah? We've got some today.
We've got three more next week, plus we've got sewer hearing.
Yes. You're spoiling my day. I move the board correspondence reading be waived.
Second.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Now we can go over to your public hearings, Ms. Teresa. Right on time, how you like that?
Wonderful thing. It took 50 weeks, but... It took 50 weeks.[1761.92]
The first public hearing is Carrington Point Estates in Carlisle Township. In accordance with Section 613163 of the Ohio Revised Code, notice is hereby given a public hearing to consider placing a detention basin and outlet pipe for Carrington Point Subdivision 1 Carlisle perpetual maintenance. Darryl Norris is the developer. The detention basin was constructed for 46 sublots in three phases. The first phase will have 17 lots. The construction cost for the detention basin is $55,200, and all the lots will be assessed 5% of $55,200, or $2,760. Each lot assessment will be $60 per year. This money would stay in account through the county auditor's office, which the engineer would use for any repairs or maintenance. Once a year, the engineer's office will inspect the facility and prepare an annual report. The maintenance fee can be collected each year depending on the engineer's annual report of work needed and funds available. The balance in the account cannot exceed 20% of the original construction cost. In Resolution 05896A adopted November 3rd, scheduled this public hearing today at 10:05. I have 10 o'clock, yeah. Publication was in the Chronicle Telegram on November 17th and 24th, and a letter was sent to Darryl Norris relating to the 17 lots.
Okay. If there's anybody in the audience who has questions or comments and wishes to make a statement, be asked that you stand to be sworn in by the Assistant Prosecutor.
Do you swear or affirm that the statements you shall give shall be the truth as you shall answer unto God or under penalty of the law of perjury?
Okay. Mr. Maletti from the engineer's office, you have comments, please?
Yes, thank you, Commissioners. Wayne Maletti, County Engineer's Office. Just a brief view, the Carrington Point subdivision number one is located on Banks Road, about a mile west of Indian Hollow. The involvement to maintain this detention basin will involve 17 lots, and they'll be charged, each lot will be charged $60 a year. That's all I have. If there's further questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Okay. I see Wayne was the only one who took the oath. Is there anybody else here who I'd like to make comment or ask questions? All right. Seeing none, are we to take action, I assume?
Yes.
Okay, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
You got that one past me, didn't you?
I'm sorry?
Should have closed the public hearing first. You did it, Betty.
So what do you want me to do now?
Make a motion to close the hearing?
I'll second.
Thank you. Ms. Blair?
No, Laurie made the motion.
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Thank you.
I'll try to pay more attention.
How about Ted?
I'm not voting this week.
It's Christmas.
I'm glad we're going to the meeting session. They're going to retrain us for next year, right? So we're going to Columbia School of Retraining?
It always helps.
Okay. I believe Willow Creek number two is next, 10:05. In accordance with Section 613163 of the Ohio Revised Code, notice is hereby given for a public hearing to consider placing a detention basin and outlet pipe for Willow Creek subdivision number two, Eane Township on perpetual maintenance. Rich Baron is the developer. The developer has requested detention basin with outlet to be placed on perpetual maintenance, and the detention basin was constructed for 18 sublots. The construction cost for the detention basin and ditch is $21,600. The total yearly maintenance assessment will be 5% of $21,600, $1,080. Each of the sublots will be assessed $60 per year. This money would stay in an account through the county auditor's office, which the engineer would use for any repairs or maintenance. Once a year, the engineer's office will inspect the facility and prepare an annual report. The maintenance fee can be collected each year depending on the engineer's annual report of work needed and funds available. The balance in the account cannot exceed 20% of the original cost of construction. In Resolution 05896B adopted November 3rd, scheduled this public hearing today at 10:05. Publication was in the Chronicle Telegram on November 17th and 24th, and letters were sent to five property owners relating to the 18 lots.
Once again, anyone who would be testifying, please stand. Ah, we have a taker. Thank you. Jerry, you swear them in, please?
Do you swear or affirm that the statements you shall give shall be the truth as you shall answer unto God or under penalty of the law of perjury?
Okay. First, Mr. Maletti?
Willow Creek subdivision number two is located 1,700 feet south of Cable Road in Eane Township. There's three phases of this subdivision, and this particular basin, a detention basin, will outlet into the Banister Ditch. There is 18 sublots affected, and the charge will be $60 per lot per year. And I'll entertain any questions. Thank you.
Mr. Baron, I believe you would like to comment.
Welcome.
My name's Rich Baron. I'm the developer of Willow Creek Phase Two. We presently own eight of the sublots in that site, and we're requesting for the maintenance of the detention basin and the inlet structure, the outlet structure, to be put on perpetual maintenance.
Thank you. Questions, Commissioners?
These are all, I'm assuming vacant lots, except on this one, we have five property owners that were notified, so are those houses already built?
Yes.
Okay.
Other comments or questions? If not, I move the public hearing be closed.
Second.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
I move the perpetual maintenance amounts be approved as submitted.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
10:10?
10:10? Okay. 10:10.
10:10.
We can go to public comment. I think we had someone in the audience if you want to. We've got five minutes.
Shirley, entertain us while we get to the timeframe.
Actually, this may entertain you. I don't always try to. I wanted to say a few minutes ago that it was very nice to be able to hear Judy Nedwick when she spoke, when we so often can't hear you sit up at the front of the room and at this side desk there. Thank you.
She's a delightful lady. So are you.
I promise you, by the end of next year, you'll be able to hear us so much, you'll say, "Bak." As soon as we get the renovations done on the other side of the building, and you can poke your head in and see what's going on over there, like, we'll be working in this room. We just didn't think it was productive to have both ends of the building apart at the same time. But we have it on the docket to make sure that that gets accomplished.
But I think Mr. Cordez, Shirley's point was that Judy was talking with the present equipment, and she could be heard.
Well, that's because it's way out there in the middle of the room.
Oh, no.
Thank you, Shirley. Thank you. Elizabeth?
Elizabeth Rummick Overland. If it is of any consolation to you, this is an ongoing problem with the Oberlin City Council.
Ah, well, thank you. So we're not the only ones who have the...
Can you fix that, David, next year?
Can I ask, Commissioners, you know, Ted and I talked about this that we received from the Community Development Department, and I'm just going through my file now. Would one of you be kind enough to read that letter and put that information into the record for us?
Okay.
Mr. booming voice.
I can do it, okay. I make a lot of noise. Actually, I've been bragging about this all week, but I didn't know it was something we were releasing out yet. It was from Rebecca Jones in our Community Development Department about what our economic development projects have done this year so far, because we've worked very hard at pushing economic development. We've got a great board here, it was working very well together. We've got the Growth Partnership together, expanding our port authority, cooperative agreements around with the Cleveland-Kaihoga Port Authority and Lorraine City Port Authority. And what we've worked on, and it's direct involvement by our Community Development and County Port Authority, I could read the whole letter, but I guess the basic is the impact, the total impact is 24 companies have been assisted by the County Port Authority and/or County Community Development. We've assisted in 565 new jobs in Lorraine County this year with an investment of approximately $94 million. So I think we've been doing our job here, and our staff have been doing a very good job. Our new hirings, we've had one employee with over 254 cold calls and then follow-ups, and we've resulted in several meetings with companies around the county interested in our help and our expertise. And we have 24 projects in the barrel for next year that looks like we're going to be working on also. So I'd like to commend Ron Twining in his office for all they've done and his staff doing a bang-up job. And I don't know what we've done in the past, but those are pretty good numbers in spite of the economic outlook for Lorraine County.
And what I'd like to say is, those are hard numbers.
Those are real numbers, direct numbers that we work with.
We do not take credit that we've discussed something with somebody, and we haven't physically assisted them, and their business improves. Is that correct, Mr. Twining? We have to actually participate in the development or the growth or the retention to be able to take credit for it. There's a lot of entities that take credit that they saw you in the hallway, something good developed, they take credit for it. We don't do that. And, you know, it's only going to get better from here. We're getting better and better, and when the partnership is more fully up and running next summer, and we have this conducive environment on the fifth floor, we're just going to go from there. And it's very, very bright what's going on, and we're doing a lot of work, and sometimes certain parts of the community are not knowledgeable about the work we do, so it's underappreciated and it's not understood because they're not engaged with it. I've noticed that more and more at these Team Lorraine County meetings, that there's a large segment of this community and this community leadership, quite frankly, that really has no idea of what we're doing down here. So I want to do a better job of trying to get that information out, and I appreciate your reading, Commissioner.
Can we give them the top copy? Because everyone has some privileged information, and it's what we're working on, you have to hand that email. Can we give them the top copy?
Yeah, we'll clean it up and send it out. Okay, Ronnie? Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Cordez. Have we reached the magic time?
We're past the...
We're okay? All right. You're on, Teresa?
Yeah, 10:10. In accordance with Section 6131.63 of the Ohio Revised Code, notice is hereby given for a public hearing to consider placing a detention basin and outlet pipe for Willow Creek subdivision number three, Eane Township on perpetual maintenance. Rich Baron is the developer. The developer has requested detention basin with outlet and the rare drainage ditch on lots 44, 45, 46, and 47 be placed on perpetual maintenance, and the detention basin was constructed for 13 sublots. The construction cost for the detention basin and ditch is $15,600. The total yearly maintenance assessment will be 5% of $15,600, or $780. Each of the 13 sublots will be assessed $60 per year. This money would stay in an account through the county auditor's office, which the engineer would use for any repairs or maintenance. Once a year, the engineer's office will inspect the facility and prepare an annual report. The maintenance fee can be collected each year depending on the engineer's annual report of work needed and funds available. The balance in the account cannot exceed 20% of the original cost of construction. In Resolution 05896C adopted November 3rd, scheduled this public hearing today, and was published in the Chronicle Telegram on November 17th and 24th, and a letter was sent to Rich Baron relating to the 13 lots.
Okay. Once again, anybody who will be testifying, please stand to be sworn in. Different hearing, Teresa made us close the last one.
Do each of you swear or affirm that the statements that you shall make shall be the truth as you shall answer unto God or under penalty of the law of perjury?
Thank you. Mr. Maletti from the engineer's office?
Yes, Willow Creek number three subdivision is just south of Willow Creek number two in Eane Township. The new detention basin will outlet into the Banister Ditch, and 13 lots will be assessed at $60 per year.
That's it?
Thank you.
Mr. Baron?
Just that we represent 12 of the 13 lots. The 13th lot is owned by Garland Griffin Homes, and they are aware and okay with the request